Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, August. Today is Tuesday, August the 15th, 2023. The time is now 6:00 PM. The regular meeting of the City Council in Trinidad. You have come to order in person as well as through Zoom. Would you please rise for the.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, roll call, please.
DeBono.
Here.
Griege.
Here.
Ogoltri.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Anybody in council wants to make any changes? Hearing now, understand the motion. So moved. Need a second.
Second.
Call a vote, please.
DeBono.
Yes.
Griege.
Yes.
Ogoltri.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. All the side on the staff reports. Item number three, Mr. Rupert, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we have a quick presentation tonight from Duke Crawford and Brett Ferris. They're installing some lighting displays around the city and want to partner with us on some great lighting artwork. So I wanted them to come together with you tonight and give you kind of their overview.
Would you please go forward and kind of give us your presentation?
Sure, I was gonna do a quick intro from. I've been coming to Trinidad for since about 2015. And we've been looking, I've been helping my mom, who's Dana Crawford, vision. And I guess I'll start with a quick question. What have been the economic engines for Trinidad in the past? And what are there going to be in the future? Does anybody have like to say, I know we've been through coal. I know we've been through futurism. I know we've been through marijuana. What's next?
Well, we hope that it's recreation.
Recreation.
Creative industry.
Creative industry. Health. Okay, we're talking about proposing digital arts, projection. Specifically, next week, I can come back and talk more about that, how that can work with the theater and fund the theater. But the hope is, is to attract artists. We can, this is the underpass. We can start projecting around town and getting people's attention and participation in the future of creativity. And so I've met at an AI meetup Brett Ferris, who is a world-class festival maker for light experiences. He's an experience designer and he's thinking of moving back to Colorado. And so I brought, I asked, invited him here and we're lucky to have Brett here. So that's the intro. And if you'd like to hear the theater plan, I can speak about that next week.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Thanks, Grace.
All right. Appreciate being able to talk to you this evening. As Duke mentioned, I'm here, I've been here trying to validate some ideas to bring a festival to the area. I'm really happy to see you have power at all the trees. That helps what I want to try to do. And as Duke mentioned, you might recognize your overpass or underneath there. This is what I do, though. These are single artworks that are strung together along a pedestrian path. Some of this stuff is happening in Florida. Some of it's happening here in Colorado. And as Duke mentioned, born and raised, I'm trying to make a move back to Colorado. It'd be great to be able to make something happen here for that reason personally. So all of these works hopefully get a sense for them being able to work with anything. I don't look for any flat surface. I'm looking for just about any surface that might work with the artwork itself. You might recognize Vale, that was last April. This is over Gourd Creek. There's a meter of snow out there. So I'm not afraid of going out and working with the environment as it is. And yes, it is the underpass. Wish you guys could see this. So with this kind of discovery that I've been working on for the last few weeks, I'm hoping to be able to give you a background that'll help us all then talk about how it could happen here in Trinidad. I've been doing this since 2008, co-founder of something called Digital Raffiti at Alice Beach. And so just to kind of break it down for you guys. This kind of work was kind of inherited back in 2008, at least its scale. You could go to the AT&T building and see a big, huge projection, the Coke building, something like this. These are intimate, smaller projections. They happen along a set pedestrian route. Starts over in this section on a road. It's called 30A, that is the only way in and out. Makes its way around this little lake and then ends at this pool. So each one of the works has its own projector. It has its own media player and it makes it very movable. A lot of these larger projection festivals, you need a forklift. You need all kinds of things to get these things in place. You need larger budgets. So in this case, 26 acres, according to Google, 42 projectors, around 30 to 35 artworks. Opened public, but ticketed. This is fenced in and it's kind of problematic for me. But the problem is that the fire marshal only wanted a certain number of people to end at the pool. So it was a kind of scarcity. They had to start selling tickets and the tickets are $250, $250 per person. So it's much different and I'm not trying to focus in on that bit. But this is what happens at these different festivals over the years. This is the entrance. You have to see people lining up there. This is an artwork outside. So you can start seeing that the art isn't just up on a flat wall. It's interacting with trees, cobblestone, whole bit. Pool, this has two projectors on it to hit that great expanse. But again, it's breaking the picture of playing. It's reflecting off water. Got all kinds of things going on here, but yeah, I wish you guys. This is the end here, though. This is the pool area, lots of other projections. I guess the one thing I wanted to point out, all the artwork, I don't know if you can, you probably can't read this stuff, but it's a very international roster of artwork in addition to locals being involved in the festival itself. Doesn't compete with conversation, though. It's another aspect that I want to highlight because a lot of these larger projection festivals demand your time. They're like performances. You have to sit there, wait for it to start, then it starts and your attention is directed this way. Not so. You can see people are having their conversations, a little bit of this and that. They'll take it in, they'll take the artwork in and then they'll, you know, head out to the next one. Now, this is another one that's closer to what I'd recommend Trinidad to look into. This is 10 projectors, 18 artworks. It's got a shorter pet path, so it just goes around the building here. It's in a park, so it's all open, no chase. And let's see here. The first year was in 2021 and it had around 900 people that year. Last year it went over to 2,000, so it does double on itself. And I'll get to why or how that might be happening according to the research that's been done. But it is something that's very doable. And in this instance, their goal is to try to bring in new audiences. The museum has a lot of snowbirds and the younger families, teens, they don't know anything about what's going on in that building at all. Now they're actually proud to see that they're being included. Teens are coming up to us and telling us how excited they are. That's different. So I'll give you a little bit of footage from this and sorry if I can get out of your way here. This bird stood there for five minutes. It's called Dirty Look, just looking at the crowd, looking at the bird. So I'll look at, I'll project onto ceilings against, you know, again, pretty much anything. It's surprising. It looks photoshopped. That's why I'm here talking to you in person. I didn't want to have to do a Zoom call. It's really important to see this stuff in person. You need your body. You need your body in front of it. So another installation, this one had eight projectors outside and inside McVickles Civic Center. I'm just jumping through these things. This is the AMP in Vale, first year and this last April. And I'll just let it play a little bit, but it's mostly just to give you a sense for the public space. This is ticketed, but there were four works outside the venue so people could take it in around the park, around the amphitheater.
Can I ask you a question about the Vale?
What about?
How many people were expected and how many people showed up?
Well, like a week before the event.
Can we refrain from questions from the audience? This is strictly.
We'll get to it. Well.
Matt Duke?
Yeah. Well, so this is the next example I just wanted to focus on. Where this last New Year's Eve, one is something up on the building. They had a couple other venues that they were trying to fill seats with. This was public again, too. Only six or was it five, six? There should have been seven, but Sony kind of missed the delivery on that. But you still had the effect that they wanted. They're still bringing families out and you can see this kind of action, this kind of inherent joy is the stuff that I love bringing because it's not just the seven-year-old raising his hands and getting into it. You got to see another clip back there where it was mid-'70s doing the same exact move on the opposite coast. So it is kind of language. Somehow the light just lets people let go. So that's kind of where, you know, I did over 15 years. There's a few things I could pick and choose to show you guys, but I wanted to make sure there was a pretty short session to also be able to ask you some questions, but here are your questions for me. But this is the last idea, I guess, is that the reason why the company is called Austra is that awe and wonder allow this self-interest to be put aside. You start thinking about community a lot more and this is what the research is telling us, going on in our brain. But you, in allowing this kind of self-interest to kind of be parked, you can start taking in the world and that kind of curiosity that goes with it in a much larger way. That northwest coast of Florida, where we started the Digital Raffiti, has a lot of different politics going on. And it's great to be able to see people come in and commingle and start talking about how much they hate or love something. And they're all just listening to each other, not, they're not getting each other's face. This is different, what can happen. And then I guess the last thought, and this is from, as it says, Toronto Metropolitan University, but they said that when you have personal connection, there's more time spent with public art and you get this sense of safety, which is something that I've heard organizers tell me about the space that I've created. It's a place where people do feel that safety, but then they start sharing to family and friends. That's exactly how Alice Beach has continued, especially when, early days in 2008, when nothing was selling in terms of real estate, let's say. They need to bring people to see the place. That notion of shareability is what kept Alice Beach in business. It created warm leads, at least for real estate, but also with Vero Beach coming out of COVID. The same ideas, that's what doubled their attendance and got people talking about what they're up to. So everybody's reaching their goals with this idea of awe. So Trinidad Lights, you did get to see it in the past. This was taken at the new Hilton. There were brand kids running all over the place in the light. They were really digging what was going on up there. And as adults go, they were also into it. So it's, you know, that's, I guess, where I'd want to stop.
Yeah, no, and thank you. Rest of the, yeah, just wanted to chime in. So really, Mayor and Council, what I want you all to understand is that we're already doing this in Trinidad, starting this process, wanted to kind of see how spectacular this could be. What I recommend is we invite our friends back for a work session upcoming so that we can have a full dialogue, answer questions. And then we can see some lighting displays as well, but I really wanted you to start getting the concept.
Yeah, like I said, I think a work session item where we can.
Absolutely.
Bring all of our questions and go through it thoroughly.
Cool. Well, two things. We'll need, if we want to do something in 2023, we need to lock down our calendar soon. But also tonight, when the sun sets, I can do a little bit of a taste of what goes on outside with the projector. So just let me know if you're able, you know, willing and I'll settle it out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
On the floor petitions or communications are written. I'm going to read the rules I've been starting to read in the last several meetings that we've had. I say thank you for joining us for, you know, tonight's meeting as a reminder. I ensure all electronic devices, including cell phones, are either turned off or set to silent mode. Out of respect for all attendees, we request removal of all hats. Anybody in the audience has a hat on, please remove it. And other head coverings during the meeting unless required for religious or medical reasons. Item three, participants wishing to address the council are required to state their full legal name for the official record. Item four, please note the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications. However, council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. Item five, we ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor, refrain from personal attacks and use of foul or abusive language. Civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. We request all audience members to respect others' rights by not causing noise or disturbances that could potentially disrupt the proceedings of the meeting. And according to rules, like I said, please follow them. And if I ask you to refrain, please do so. If you do not, I can have you removed. So thank you very much. First person on our list, Richard Tom Murphy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. I'm Tom Smurfy with Trinidad Times TV and Miller Murphy dinner room. It's kind of hard to believe, but in a couple of years, it's going to be 20 years that I've been here filming. I started when I was 39. I was very precocious, so I was 10 when I started. It's a joke. I wish. So when I started the TV, I've been doing interviews and candidate forums ever since 2005. We have an election coming up and Ben and I have decided to work together, The Chronicle and Trinidad Times TV, and we're going to do a candidate forum the weekend after Labor Day at my place at noon. We're, we haven't worked out all the details yet, but I don't think it's going to be open to the public because we have so many people from what we've gone through now that are running. And I want to be able to ask the same questions. So we're still working out the details and the people that are here that are running for office, they're invited. Everyone's invited that's running for office. So we want to invite the city, if they want to put together a PowerPoint that we could put on the channel, we could do it this time, too, that we'll put out there. It'll be available. So, and I'm still going to do my one-on-one interviews where I said, some of you have sat with me before. I think the other forum that happens, happens too late. And as many people as we have running and as many things that are going to be on the ballot, I just want to get this started as soon as possible. So right after Labor Day, be ready. What I think we're going to do is do all the interviews and then put them on YouTube, you know, and then on the channel. So everyone's invited. Through the years, I've interviewed a lot of people. Some people don't like me here, but some of those people still sat with me, you know? And they know that I'm not partisan. It's not about your party. It's about the community and trying to find the best people for that, for that. And I know there's some anxiety in here tonight, but I've been doing this for nearly 20 years. And this is what the process involves, you know, is the people coming forward. So I applaud them showing up because there are a lot of countries where this isn't even possible. And so this is part of how we make this sausage in America. So God bless everybody that's going to get them to speak and God bless all you for doing what you did. So thank you. It's September night, The Chronicle and Trinidad Times TV.
For everyone speaking tonight, remind, I remember that you have five minutes for your presentation and Mr. Downs will be the timekeeper. Mr. Jason Decker.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me here today. I'm coming today as a concerned member of the Lodging Tax Advisory Board and I wanted to address a couple of issues. The first one is called Destination Blueprint. It's actually an amazing opportunity that Trinidad has been given. For those of you not familiar, I'll just do a brief synopsis of it, but essentially it's a free program from the state of Colorado. They accepted 10 different cities into this program, including Steamboat Springs, Grand Junction, Leadville and Yarra. And essentially it's to help tourism in a variety of different ways. They make essentially a free, a free program to help cities, lodging boards, things like that, too. And they go through and they make a survey of the residents to get the feel of the town and what kind of stuff the current residents are looking for and their feeling of tourism. They do a stakeholder survey of people in the tourism industry. They do a visitor profile, 100 hours of project-based consulting. They even assign you with a tourism consultant and they teach you how to do things that are really valuable, like how to get better tourism numbers in the winter, you know, something that people struggle with off-season stuff. So it's really amazing opportunity. How to train your workforce for tourism and building awareness in the local community about the positive impacts of tourism on the community. And of course, you know, how to make a visitor, a better visitor experience and teach respectful tourism to visitors. And the idea of this program is to help put Trinidad on the map as a tourism destination. So it's really an incredible opportunity, just the program alone, which needs practically nothing from them. They will come down, you know, assess Trinidad, see what our strengths are, you know, what we would like to advertise for tourism and they will make a full plan for us. It's got hundreds of thousands of dollars in value and just the plan alone requires very, very little from us. So it's, it's really amazing. If we implement the ideas that they give us, we could be tens of millions of dollars over time. So it's a really exciting opportunity. And of course, with that will come lots of lodging tax and just tax revenue in general. So due to some recent changes in the city, I'm concerned that although we were awarded this program, that city staff will not be participating in this. I understand the paperwork has not been signed, which is jeopardizing this amazing opportunity. It seems that recently we've got a culture of turning down grants and assistance, including recently a six-figure grant for trail building from the Colorado Office of Outdoor Recreation that was turned down by our Director of Outdoor Recreation, which is a mind-boggling sentence to say. And I can't comprehend why we would turn down a trail building and tourism grant opportunities that help us become a better community for its citizens and tourists alike. So I'm questioning is turning down these awarded grants such as the Project Blueprint and the Trail Building Grants, a discriminatory and retaliatory move from certain city staff against members of the community that they have personal problems with? Are these actions hurting members of the community and our city revenues? There's been an outcry, outcry from the community of why we would turn down a trail building grant that is much needed and would benefit our own citizens and be a great thing to advertise for our outdoor recreation community, which we are currently building. Also, there is $150 million in infrastructure grants from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Acts that we believe Trinidad is available for. And I think something that would be very helpful for this community.
One minute, sir.
And I join the Lodging Tax Advisory Board to make Trinidad better for its citizens and tourists alike. When city staff are not following their own policies and procedure, it's a disservice to the volunteer members of the Lodging Tax Advisory Board and for the citizens of Trinidad. And I am just asking to make sure that we follow through with these grants that we have been awarded. I think they're extremely important and they require very little from us, from the community. If we're a community that cannot accept free money, I just, I don't know what else to say to that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Rupert, I'll follow up with you tomorrow on this. Ms. Keighley Williams?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I address you today to emphasize a few critical and timely concerns, primarily discrimination and the distracting effects that breaking discrimination policy has on the city financially. First of all, it's a policy of the City of Trinidad that no person shall, on the grounds of sex or age, be excluded from participation in any operation at the City of Trinidad. Now discrimination includes lack of access to public information, harassment and retaliation. Harassment includes a wide range of abusive and humiliating behaviors. For example, Lee Elliott received a legal letter from council demanding her removal from the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. Although she formally requested information from the city in order to fulfill her duties as an advisory board member, she was denied public data and therefore sought assistance from a state agency. She was also accused of behavior that some staff found disrespectful and aggressive. Was her conduct unprofessional? Are these grounds for dismissal? Or is she simply a victim of retaliation? Per city and federal policy, retaliation is discrimination. Retaliation includes coercing anyone because they filed a complaint or otherwise participated in an investigation. So what exactly was disrespectful or aggressive about Ms. Elliott's conduct that warrants dismissal from her board appointment? May I remind you and the audience that just one year ago, two male staff, director and level employees had a physical fight in the lobby of City Hall during business hours. This altercation, evidenced by staff and surveillance footage, was beyond disrespectful and aggressive. Yet they were not terminated. And the city has a zero tolerance policy against violence in the workplace. So why were these two men treated so mildly? Why was policy not followed? And why is inequitable treatment from one staff member or one board member to another staff member or board member, why is that permitted or even pursued? Why are men who physically fight considered worthy of employment? Yet assertive women or any women considered expendable? Requesting public information and speaking out to support city policy should not be labeled as aggressive or divisive. Asking questions is not divisive. The citizens of Trinidad deserve to have a municipality governed by policies and procedures that are followed consistently, comprehensively and fairly. Preventing citizens from asking questions about public monies is not only harmful to our community, but it costs us financially and it's a distraction from receiving and administering state and federal funds. Trinidad, a rural community, is eligible for more funding, now more than ever in the sectors of tourism, outdoor recreation and infrastructure. We desperately need this funding after revenue is down this year more than 30%. Why has the City of Trinidad turned down hundreds of thousands of dollars that have already been awarded by the state outdoor recreation and tourism dollars? The citizens don't know the answer. Colorado has received billions of dollars in IIJA funding from the Infrastructure Improvement and Jobs Act. Trinidad is eligible for more than $150 million. Why isn't this a priority for our city council and staff? Some of the deadlines have already passed and many of them are coming up in August and September with no plans to apply. and September with no plans to apply. I had the opportunity to go to the CML conference this year and listen to whatever the other municipalities were talking about. These are the issues that other municipalities our size are talking about. Trinidad has not opted into Prop 123. Now, I talked with Michael earlier and I think that you, that there are our plans to do that, so I commend that. This is a state program which allows local governments and private companies to improve local housing infrastructure. The state provides free local government assistance for this program. Why are we shorting ourselves if we don't opt in? The deadline is November 1st, 2023.
One minute, sir.
The citizens of Trinidad have the right to ask questions and should seek, should seek out and demand answers. Thank you for your consideration today for these critically important matters.
Thank you. Kevin Castro?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I didn't think I was going to come up here and talk, but I figured if someone like me spoke up, more will. Others will too. The last time there was a meeting and a lot of us showed up in support of somebody, you know, and all they're, all they're needed was an apology. We are forgiving people. We, these are all my friends, we all. And we just, you know, try to correct our mistakes and we try to move on and we just try to be better people. And it just seems that there are not enough maturity for that here that I've seen. You know, like why can't we just apologize and move on? Now, we have a second qualified person who is being removed from city staff and I know this person could do some really good things for Trinidad. Being, she's being removed for actually trying to do the right thing. And that puts a lot of question into about who is on council. How can you be in a position of power if you are too, if you're not even mature enough to take responsibility for your own actions? And I'm, I'm seeing that there's a lack of care, an actual care for Trinidad. We have lost two big attractions and nothing was done to help save those like Arcticade and Blues Fest. Those are like the two biggest attractions that we've lost. And it's hard to see anything else helping other businesses thrive too. And this small town is built on small businesses. I own my own business as a landscaper and I'm a musician as well. And I've seen a lot of growth in the arts and the music scene here. And I feel like there could be more done to help with that section of Trinidad's growth because we're about to lose our recreational marijuana revenue. It's gonna, it was a boom and now we're seeing the bust. So, I just hope to see some change. This is happening not just in Trinidad, but you know, all over the United States. We just don't want to see any more empty promises from politicians. I just hope we decide to do the right thing. And either way, we're, I know people are looking at those seats and wanting to take them. So, I was just going to leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Elliott?
Mayor and City Council, I wish to invoke my rights under, under the municipal code since my removal of the Lodging Tax Advisory Board will be under consent agenda. I want to take a few moments to tell this dais and the public exactly what this council is consenting to. This dais appointed me to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board to make positive board change. Private conversations with some of you expressed a need for tourism to thrive and for the LTAB to make recommendations to the council. I took this charge seriously. I requested a complete and itemized tourism budget from the city staff twice and I was never provided with the full budget. I got tired of not receiving enough information to properly understand what was going on. So, I made a core request of the current and past two years itemized budget. I wanted to do a good job and use the core requested documents to help guide the 2024 budget to meet the expectations you set. These documents allow for the gathering of historical knowledge and services typical costs. It did not take long for me to discover strange expenditures for the Office of Outdoor Recreation in regards to the Trinidad True Outdoors website. A member of staff proudly told me that he owns the website, which poses as an official city website. Yet, the tourism tax monies have been spent to promote this website, print ads, bill boards, wrapped kiosks, paper flyers, digital assets, and digital marketing. This employee's personal website and slogan have been promoted by taxpayers' monies without the approval of the former or current board. I contacted two former board members. Both knew that the Trinidad True Outdoors was owned by the city staffer and not the City of Trinidad. Both members stated that they have been telling council and not approving ads for the Trinidad True Outdoors. The Tourism Department ignored the former board member's recommendation to not promote the employee's private enterprise and knowingly continued to promote the city staffer's private website and slogan, an asset that the City of Trinidad does not own or have an actual control over. I found this troubling and I promptly notified the city manager and LTAB board of my line item findings, realizing it was several thousand dollars spent. I received no response. I then reached out to two city council members who agreed this was a problem that I should bring to light, that I should not bring to light in fears of negative press for the city. On 6/27, minute 40 of the LTAB meeting on YouTube, the city staffer stated in open session without prompt that she has an account of city money for the travel shop that she may spend as she pleases and that was not reflected in the core requested documents I procured. I followed the staff's advice and contacted the correct city staff to get to the bottom of this. I was told no such account existed. Instead of actually looking into the issue, city staff reprimanded me for breaking sunshine law for trying to shed light on the problem. I was told by the City of Tari in an email that I might, I may not see outside legal counsel, that I should no longer discuss the items I brought to light. And thus, I felt I had no choice but to contact the Colorado Bureau of Investigation and report the possible fraud with my findings. I told them how I tried to go through the proper channels, how I tried to work with staff and the city council to make change, only to be ignored, bullied, and gaslighted. Staff has attempted to obstruct the LTAB board campaign to allow the citizens of Trinidad to choose its own tagline. I found this odd, but knowing now that the Tourism Department is promoting and funding another staffer's personal digital property, it makes sense. At our 7/25 retreat meeting, the LTAB board discussed canceling all current and future advertisements that did not work with our marketing plan. We were going to vote on this on our eight-week meeting, which did not happen because staff forgot to post our agenda, which was sent out a week in advance. It makes sense the staff would sabotage this vote so they could continue to promote the private endeavors without taxpayer monies. I was not the only time this happened and each time I was told that I was the problem, not staff.
One minute, ma'am.
When I spoke to the Colorado Bureau of Investigations, they told me when people are hiding something, these are the typical tactics they use: sabotage, intimidation, and framing the victim as the aggressor. I'm now being attempted, I'm now being removed for attempting to do the job that you asked of me because I asked questions that certain people didn't want answered. I found out these lies and misappropriations and I reported them and that's why I'm being removed. This is what the city council is consenting to. My removal will be political fodder. If a 3% tourism tax increase does not pass in November, there will be those who will use me as convenient scapegoat. I want to be clear that I believe that the best chance for Trinidad is to have a thriving economy through tourism. For this reason, I support the tourism tax increase. There are also those who will use my removal for political gain to accuse me and my husband of causing community strife. This is not or has ever been my intent. My goal was to always promote Trinidad and be a good steward of the city's tourism funds. This is a beautiful community with kind people and I believe the community will come together for the greater good of our neighbors. I encourage the citizens of Trinidad to come together and shed light on darkness and to continue to volunteer for Trinidad.
Item B, removal of Lee Lopez from the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. Item C, new fermented malt beverage and wine license application filed by CF Altitude LLC doing business as ALTA 6338 at 806 East Goddard Avenue. Set tentative neighborhood boundary as the city's corporate limits and set for the public hearing at 6:00 p.m. on September 19, 2023. Do we have a representative here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Item D, approval of temporary modification of premises application filed by Hollywood Bar and Cafe LLC at 1133 North Linden Avenue on October 7, 2023 for an outdoor concert in the parking lot. Mr. Banding, I think I did see you here. Thank you for being here. Item E, approval of the bills for an amount of $1,268,745.98. Item F, approval of the payroll, August 5, 2023 through August 18, 2023, and August 19, 2023 through September 1, 2023, in the amount of $469,68.12. Entertained motion?
Mayor, we have a missing councilperson. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Wait one second.
Sorry.
Did he read at the beginning of the reading of that?
He, he go to the beginning of the reading.
I should probably reread the process now.
Yeah, I think so. How's that lady looking?
I'm going to read the consent agenda, item five again. The total. Item 5A, approval of regular meeting minutes of August 1, 2023 and special meeting minutes of August 7, 2023. Item B, removal of Lee Lopez from the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. Item C, for a new fermented malt beverage and wine license application filed by CF Altitude LLC doing business as ALTA 6338 at 806 East Goddard Avenue. Setting tentative enablement boundary as the city's corporate limits and set for public hearing to 6:00 p.m. on September 19, 2023. We do have a representative here. Item D, approval of temporary modification, a premises application filed by Hollywood Bar and Cafe LLC at 1133 North Linden Avenue on October 7, 2023 for an outdoor rec concert in the parking lot. Mr. Banding is also here. Item E, approval of the bills in the amount of $1,268,745.98. Item F, approval of the payroll, of the payroll, August 5, 2023 through August 18, 2023, and August 19, 2023 through September 1, 2023, in the amount of $469,68.12. Entertained motion? So, move. Need a second?
Second.
Call over, please.
DeBano?
Yes.
Gorigo?
Yes.
Boglottrey?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 6, public hearing, if we have none. Item 7, unfinished business, we also do not have more. Item 8, miscellaneous business.
I hope you're not here, Michael, for more money.
Item 8, miscellaneous business aid, Housing Now incentive program application, community consideration for elevation community land trust, city view heights, single tenant homeownership bill. Entertained motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Irman also. Do we have anybody here from the elevation community?
Yes, we do. I'm going to give an introduction and then I'll turn it over to both the applicant and the elevation.
Are they on the line?
Yeah, they're on. So, we have officially hit the $2 million mark with this application, which is going to result in 140 units, 78 of which are funded by the Housing Now program. I will be back hopefully in September to give you a full rundown of that project because I know it's done on tonight's agenda. I just wanted to let the council know with the funding, if you fund tonight, we're at that $1,650,000 and then additionally, the tap fee deferrals are going to eat up the remainder of that $2 million. So, this is probably the last application unless we see some attrition in the program, which I'll get into in September. But that said, this is a unique application in that the Elevation Land Trust is the purchaser of the units after they're built. However, the builder is the, or is the receiver of the funds. And those funds help to buy down the cost of the unit for the final purchaser. This is a unique opportunity in that the Elevation Land Trust provides administration oversight of the deed restriction and they actually keep the affordability of the 99 year lease.
Excuse me, would you, Mr. Downs, go tell him to keep the, keep it down healthy, please?
I can. You guys go ahead.
Thank you.
No problem.
So, the elevation land, there's, there's the, the relationship of the Elevation Land Trust with the city. They're actually also involved in a project, talent projects as well. Their organization oversees multiple properties across the state, which also is a huge benefit for how this, how this works because they actually have the financial backstop through their portfolio of properties. The final piece of the puzzle that the Elevation Land Trust provides for buyers is, one, they have lower interest financing programs with the banks that they work in partnership with and have relationships with, which as you know, that interest rates right now are a real barrier to entry, especially for first-time homebuyers. They also target AMIs that are less than what the Housing Now program even mandates, which is 80% or below, and they try to achieve affordability prices at 70% or below. This builder is planning on 20 units. We max out at 10, so the funding for this will be $150,000 plus the tap fees, but it's just for those 10 units. The additional units when that encounters that. The final thing that I will put on there is that we've kind of tightened because of the, the relationship between the Elevation Land Trust and the builder, we've kind of tightened up the agreement a little bit in a couple of different ways. One, we have added that the grantee, the builder must have the land in acquisition by March 1, 2024 and have three years basically to complete the project with certain milestones. That helps tighten up the relationship. The other thing that we have March 1st, 2024, and have three years basically to complete the project with certain milestones. That helps tighten up the relationship. The other thing that we have built into the agreement is that the city's legal counsel will be able to review the purchase agreement between the builder and the developer to ensure that your interests in the funds are protected, which I'm sure they will be, given elevation community land trust's reputation. But we also baked that in to ensure that that step is being achieved and making sure that we hit that March 1st deadline up next year. With that, I'll turn it over to the applicant. This is also the gentleman who's building the timberline. I think he'll buy that today. It's out of the ground for sure. Louis Ledke and Allison, or Charles, Allison Guthrie is also on, on there.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Good evening, everyone. I'm wondering, do you have a copy, like a printed copy of the presentation, or should I have the ability to screen share?
Really, we have copies. We used them on our drive. Yes.
You do have copies? Okay. So I'll kind of just keep, give you a brief presentation overview of the project specifics, like location, size, you know, product type of what I'm looking to build, and then I'll probably turn it over to Charles to kind of give a little more detail on the mechanics of how, how it's intended to work. So just kind of walking through the presentation, as Michael said, you know, I'm familiar with Trinidad. I'm building the Timber View Apartments on Denver and Oak. Not, you know, I don't have a really tight personal connection to the town. I'm more in the San Luis Valley on the other side of the pass with my family, but I love the town. It's, you know, it's like all you said, I mean, a lot of pride there, a lot of possibilities, potential, beautiful architecture. So I was just very interested in, you know, contributing to that and helping with the housing problem, or the shortage of housing. So I've got some experience. I'm a relatively newer developer. I don't have, you know, decades of experience, but I have about one decade of experience. So mostly focused on rural communities, population under 10,000 or right around 10,000. Today, I've really been focused on building rental projects, multifamily, but you know, that's only one, really one segment of the market, and I was looking for an opportunity to provide a homeownership opportunities to kind of the same demographic and what I like to focus on in the market that I'm hoping to serve is really the 80% to 120% AMI mark. In this case, as Michael mentioned, affordability is intended to be at the 70% AMI mark, but I think, he'll probably get into this, but there's a, there's a little bit of flexibility to the, to the upside on that in terms of who might qualify for these homes. My, you know, for me, reputation is everything, so whatever I build, it's not, you know, cut rate, super cheesy. I want to build a quality product that's going to be there for, you know, decades and decades and use, you know, the best materials that we can and obviously all the modern efficiency standards. So that applies to the rental project and then also to the single family home. So today I've done a few rental projects, and this is going to be the first for sale project, but realistically, I mean, it's a little bit of a different animal in terms of development, but it's a lot simpler, to be honest, versus a commercial code. So this will be the second project in Trinidad. It is in the City View Heights subdivision on the north side of town. And essentially, if, if you're looking at the presentation on page nine, there's kind of a plat map, I believe it's from 2006, of that subdivision. And what I'm looking to do is essentially build out all the remaining vacant lots. So it's an existing subdivision, I would say about 60, 70% developed, but these vacant lots have been, been there with utility stubs, and obviously the streets are in, the curb gutter, so really ripe for development, not a huge barrier to, to development. So that, that works out great. And, you know, hoping to kind of keep the character, and you'll see on some of the renderings of the, the homes that I'm selecting, and, you know, still subject to tweak a little bit, but try to stay with the character of the community, try to keep the size not super tiny, but, you know, not 2,000, 2,500 square feet where the, the price point has to be much higher. So that's kind of why you see the sizing around, you know, 1200 to 1300 square feet. Construction is going to be either, either site-built or modular. And I mean, for those that are not intimately familiar with the industry, people use different terms for different things. Modular, all I'm, I'm using that term in the sense it's going to be factory-built. Doesn't mean it's, I guess what some people might call a manufactured home with, with lower quality materials. Actually, the materials are, in my opinion, above like standards that site-built home in terms of sub-modular factories, so very high quality framing, you know, modern, modern home. All the appliances 100% electric, and I think it'll be a desirable place to live. And so instead of going with the cookie cutter route where we just plot, you know, the same home on all 20 sites, we have four tentative kind of different floor plans and profiles to try to change up it. You know, so we're going to change up the floor plan, the profile of the homes, and then also obviously colors and materials. So there'll be nice diversity. But again, they all kind of target the same square footage, bedroom count, bathroom count, and typically a one bedroom. If we can fit on the lots, some of the lots are a little bit narrow, we'll try to do at least a one car garage, maybe a two car garage. And that, that's kind of the gist of, and the timeline of the project is, you know, we're looking to put together capital now, which this is a crucial part, this grant from, from the city, and then, you know, there'll be some other capital that comes in, and we're hoping to start construction optimistically toward the end of this year, more realistically, probably early next year. But it won't be something that, you know, this isn't like a 2024 late kind of start project. This is a high priority and hoping to get started very soon. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or you can jump over to Charles and kind of maybe give an overview on the mechanics.
Council, do I have any questions?
I don't right now.
I'm having a hard time reading this color coding on these lots. This yellow is hard for me to read on, on our iPad, but what is that? Are those different models of homes, or what is that distinction?
Oh, yes. So this is like kind of my initial stab at trying to illustrate this before we have professional construction drawings, but basically if you just follow the colors, and there's names associated with those colors, but if you, if you look at where that color is plotted on the map and then scroll down, or you have the paper copy, but if you flip back to, I think it's page 11, that color corresponds to a certain floor plan.
Okay.
And so that's what I was hoping to accomplish, is kind of not having two floor plans the same right next to each other, you know, and then having different elevations as you go down the street. So it provides some nice diversity.
Okay. Got it. Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
You say you've got 20 lots there. Are there more lots available there for future building? I mean, I'm not sure what you have vacant there. Have you, in other words, have you acquired all the lots that you need?
This is, I've acquired all the lots that are available in the subdivision. There are a few lots that the seller wasn't willing to part with, but I believe there's only two or three. So this is the bulk of the remaining lots in this subdivision.
It's kind of nice that they call the infrastructure, is there, is there, is there any questions?
I, no, I just would comment that it's, this is an area of town that I've heard a great deal of interest in getting, finalizing the development of this, this subdivision. So I, I think this is a great way to do that, and that's all I have to say right now.
No questions.
Would you mind speaking a little more to the AMI requirements, just to expand on that a little bit?
And Charles, maybe you can talk about the AMI. So the question was about AMIs, and so just real quick, just the Housing Now program permitted to 100% AMI. They're, the elevation land trust model, and Charles, I'll let you speak to that directly. They actually achieve an AMI price point of 80%, and they qualify their own buyers. So they, so what happens, this took, this took a minute for me to understand too. What happens is Lewis actually builds the homes before, before they're sold, elevation takes title. They record the deed restriction land lease, which is the protection that we need to give them funding to protect our investment in affordability, and that land lease stipulates that AMI. But Charles, go, you can go ahead and talk about your, your organization and the 80% AMI, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Michael, and hello, Mayor, and council members. It's great to be with you all again. I presented with my colleague Lauren DeBelle a couple of weeks ago, maybe closer to a month ago now, on some general information about elevation community land trust, and it's great to be back in front of you today. Michael is correct. We sell our homes to households that income qualify at and below 80% of the area median income. And yes, that fee restriction is, or the, that income restriction is contained in the land lease, which is the affordability restriction, and is reported at the time of sale to the buyer. So if you remember, what separates community land trust from ownership, from market rate homeownership, is that our nonprofit sells the homes, but not the land, to our homeowners. And then we lease the land to the homeowners in 99-year increments, and we keep ownership of the land so that we can ensure that even after the first homeowner moves in, that home is always going to be available for households at and below 80% of the area median income. So it's not just the first household that move in that are going to be able to take advantage of these prices. It's really an investment into permanent affordability. And happy to answer any other questions you might have about the land lease or elevation's operation. We're really excited to be partnering with Lewis on this project. We are a statewide nonprofit with a deep footprint, but a relatively small staff. We have just 13 full-time staffers, so we use developer partnerships like the partnership we have with Lewis to really spread our reach further and to expand our capacity. We don't, we don't have the time or the expertise to get involved in the minigitty of the development work. We'd rather buy the homes once they're completed and then do what we do best, which is the actual preservation of the homeownership opportunities in perpetuity.
Any questions, Charles?
So in addition to the payment on the home, then that person that owns the home has to make a payment to your organization, and I'm assuming that that combination of those two payments still meet the requirements for affordability?
Yes. So we, so what you're referring to, a couple of persons, is the land lease fee? So our homeowners pay the standard mortgage interest, principal, taxes, and things like that to their mortgage servicer, and then they pay the land lease fee, which is $100 per month. They pay that directly to elevation, and really that just supports the operations of our organization. And our income qualification process ensures that no homeowner is paying more than a third of their monthly income towards their housing payment, and that includes the land lease fee in addition to the mortgage, uh, principal, taxes.
That's impressive, because $100 a month is less than some H O eight pieces.
Exactly. So we, we really keep it low, and in fact, in the land lease, which is the affordability restriction, there are really tight regulations on how we can increase that fee. In effect, it always has to be affordable for households at and below 80% of the area median income.
Have you done this project in other communities, this concept?
I, I missed the audio on that, I'm sorry.
Have you done this project in other different communities, and if so, how successful has it been?
Yes, not this exact project, but the model that we're doing with Lewis, we've used in other communities with great success. We are about to purchase two really large developments, actually one in Denver, a 49-unit condo building in the Five Points neighborhood, and one in Work Collins, a 54-unit condo home development in a high opportunity neighborhood there, with developer partners who obtain different incentives to help the financing work, and then we execute purchase and sale agreements with those developers, as we'll do with Lewis, to purchase the homes upon completion and sell them to qualified homebuyers. And in addition to those projects that are coming down the pipeline, we'll deliver soon, we've also used the projects with great success in other developments. Just a couple blocks from me here in Denver is a 92-unit condo building that we acquired from our developer partner in the summer of 2021, and that building had studio condos starting at $150,000.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
One, one other real important note that I think you, the council, should be aware of. One other really big benefit of the elevation community land trust is they're actually like a grandparent of Big Wallet. And then in the event, I mean, literally in the event that someone gets into foreclosure proceedings, they have the right to cure and take the unit and preserve the affordability. And I think that's a huge component as well. I can tell you through the years of administering, there's two really models, there's the land trust and there's a deed restriction model. And the administration of deed restrictions, having to step up as a municipality and purchase those units out of foreclosure is like a emergency fire sale. And in this case, they, because they have a relationship with the lender, help with counseling, et cetera, to get folks to the point where they don't even get into that foreclosure. That is another huge benefit, and it's also a huge lift on the administration piece of deed restriction management that they provide to the city at no cost. So their, their staff of 13 is really an extension of like a housing department for the city, which is also why the state has really been pushing the elevation land trust to invest in rural communities around the state and outside the metro area. So.
Frank, have any questions? No. You answered what I was talking about.
And, and as you told us at the work session, the way this works is, is that when they decide to leave and sell the house, the land trust keeps 75% of any appreciation of the value, and the owner keeps 25%, which they can then take and invest somewhere in another house that will be fully theirs eventually.
That's exactly right, council member. And the only slight nuance I would add is the land trust isn't going to be keeping that 75% of the equity, it's staying in the home. So rather than the home being sold for 100% of the appreciation added on top of the initial homeowner's price, it's just 25% of the appreciation that gets added. And that is a huge part of how we can make sure that even at resale, after resale, after resale, the home is going to be affordable to households at and below 80% area median income.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions, but it's a, it's a great business to keep the, the, the action of it going into foreclosure out of the hands of the man. Aaron, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
In response, not response, in addition to what Karen or Aaron, Ms. Ogudry was just saying, was asking, that 25% that the homeowner retains, do they have to live in that home for a certain period of time to be able to retain that percentage?
Nope. They can sell the next day if they really wanted to. You know, the 25% probably would add up too much, but that 25% goes into effect as soon as they move in.
Okay. What is the, at this point, you tell me, I know things can fluctuate from here. What do you anticipate the cost of these homes will sell for at this point in time? Any, any thoughts?
Really difficult to say at this point. We price our homes so that they are affordable to households earning 75, 70%, excuse me, in the area median income. So the pricing, the eventual pricing of these homes is going to be completely dependent on what the area median incomes are at the time that the product actually is put up for sale. On top of that, there's a lot of variables that go into the development that make it hard to predict the, the price point right now. However, once we do enter into that, yeah, there, that purchase and sale agreement with Lewis, which as Michael pointed out, we'll have a chance to review and approve, the purchase price of the units will be higher than that agreement.
Once approved, when do you anticipate starting construction on your first home or homes?
So right, right now, surveys are underway. Actually, they should be complete, and then, you know, these are relatively simple floor So we're moving straight to construction documents with, with that survey as the base file. Just the older survey wasn't, you know, we had to kind of update, update all that and make sure property lines and everything were accurate. So I anticipate, you know, a submittal. And we haven't, I haven't really talked to the city about specific details of how, you know, we're going to process this as a building permit. Ideally, we do it in one, one application. But if, assuming we can get kind of the benefit of one application and get them all permitted at the same time, hopefully, you know, targeting maybe three months from now at most to have building permits, and then trying to synchronize financing on that same timeline to, to start. So I would say, you know, optimistically, like I said earlier, that this year would be, we'd be on site starting to do some earthwork, but could, could fall into next year.
So you're, from what I'm hearing is that you're going to apply for all twenty units and all at once, correct? You're going to?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, that's kind of an important to, to note. I didn't really speak to that, but that's important to note that this is one project, we're viewing this as one project versus, you know, twenty, twenty separate distinct homes. We're building them as one project, financing them as one project.
This is kind of getting into the weeds, but I'm wondering, will the houses have landscaping around them? Will you put in grass or? Because I'm kind of figuring you're doing these all at the same time that in order to make it look like a cohesive neighborhood that they would be, have at least grass, is that your plan?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be a base level of landscaping installed at, at closing. But obviously, you know, everybody has their own preferences, so it, it won't be over the top, you know, palm trees and all that stuff. It'll, it'll be a base level installation, kind of like if you see new, you know, new communities, you know, there's typically maybe, maybe some sod, maybe just, you know, hydro seating to get started. But that's, yeah, that's a little too early to tell just yet.
Okay.
Depending on the time, the time of year as well.
Something else with landscaping, you know, grass is fine if there's a small amount, but possibility of, in conjunction, maybe some ziriscaping also. Keep the water level down, I think, would be preferable as well, so. Does council have any, yeah, council have any other questions? No. Okay. Anything else you have to add?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item A D, first reading of an ordinance, admitting a proposed home rule charter amendment to the voters of the city of Trinidad at the regular municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three, which would remove the city of Trinidad municipal landfill enterprise designation and set a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to two P M on September the first, twenty twenty-three. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Garrett?
Who's that, Cheryl?
Cheryl. Pass the buck.
Yeah. But of course Cheryl would speak on this.
All right. I believe the landfill was separated from the general fund in two thousand nineteen, or starting in two thousand nineteen. And since then, we've been out of compliance with local, division of local governments, because no budget should be submitted in a deficit. And since, well, we've been able to balance the revenues and expenditures for the previous years. However, we shouldn't have submitted with a negative fund balance, which we've been doing since two thousand nineteen. And in leave in two thousand nineteen, the fund balance was around, somewhere around negative eight hundred thousand dollars. We closed out fiscal year two thousand twenty-two with a five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar deficit. We were hoping that it would be, you know, we'd chip away at that eight hundred and eighty thousand, but the closure and post-closure costs jumped significantly this past year because of supply, demand, COVID, all the pricing. So typically, you know, we see an increase in closure costs of about forty thousand, and this time, I believe it was around a hundred and sixty thousand. So that increases the liability. Currently, the post-closure and closure liability is two point two million. Again, the fund balance is at a deficit of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And when we submitted the two thousand twenty-three budget, expenses were over revenues by seventeen hundred dollars. It was a small amount. I shouldn't have done that. I should have forced the balance so that they were equal, but it ended up being seventeen hundred in the hole. So then, in another effort, we violated the division of local governments' requirements for budget submittal. So we've been purchasing equipment. We used marijuana to purchase the wheel loader. Marijuana has been funding, will, or will fund the debt service for this particular purchase. However, they had to purchase another T-Rex, I don't remember what it was called, some?
Hull truck. Yeah.
Yes. And I think that was around fifty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars. And probably about two months after we had it, it went down. So it's requiring about thirty-eight thousand to forty-five thousand to fix it. So, and that was a used piece of equipment. They also needed a compactor, which according to the landfill foreman, is around six hundred thousand dollars. Landfill cannot sustain these purchases. It can't sustain the way that it's functioning right now unless we significantly increase costs or, I mean, I'm sorry, tipping fees by putting it back in the general fund. It had, the general fund has a big enough fund balance to sustain it. And we are able to use general fund fund balance to go out, to get debt, or to go into debt to purchase these types of equipment. If we have to buy that compactor now, I don't know how we're going to buy it. We can't give it more than ten percent of what it earns in revenues, and its revenue is around five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. We've already pledged fifty thousand dollars for a debt service for that wheel loader. So we're, we can't grant it any more funding from the general fund. That, that's my soapbox.
Very persuasive, excuse me.
We need to get it moved, most specifically because of division of local efforts requirements.
Questions from council?
Cheryl, if we get out all of these expenditures, I guess the transfer station wouldn't be in the works, would it?
I don't know. I can't, I don't know.
I don't know either. I mean, if you, if you keep deficit, it's just amounts and amounts thing. You're paying all this money for all this equipment still, so it's kind of a lose-lose.
I, I guess, you know, having to transfer the, you're talking about transferring the waste to another government site. I would imagine that'd probably get kind of costly as well.
Well, so it's a lose-lose.
Not sure if it would be a benefit or not. Because I do know that so many other landfills are closing, and the cost of the transfer is getting pretty astronomical, especially with fuel and everything.
I was on council one week, and I will never, ever forget that meeting because it was done at the request of a prior, a prior city manager. And during the whole meeting, Cheryl was sitting there like that. So it's come to fruition now. Yes.
It makes, it makes sense. I can't imagine raising the tipping fees enough to cover these costs, especially in this area.
What's the, what's the number though?
Yeah.
What's the right at the edge number for fees?
Well, we, when I built this budget, when I built this budget, we had considered raising the tipping fees by fifty percent. So we never did that, which means our expenditures are actually over expended our revenues by fifty percent, which was what, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So when the year comes to close, our expenditures will far exceed our revenues because we did not increase tipping fees at the beginning of the year. So.
Do you have questions?
No, other than, do we, if we change all this, do we need to increase the fees?
Mayor, council, I think it's always prudent to look at fees and make sure that we're in the market. And so, yes, I think, just like all of our other utilities, we want to make sure we're mindful of that. We want to keep the cost reasonable for people who are hauling and depositing trash. But, yeah, there, there likely will be fee increases over time as the cost of operations increase. So that's something we're always going to be mindful of. But the goal is to not have to increase them to a ridiculous amount to discourage people from using our landfill.
Have any questions?
If this is a ballot proposal, I mean, how, and it doesn't go, I mean, in the right way, what, what is the outcome of that? And what availability do we have to help ensure that it does go? I mean.
So I believe it's municipal code that says an enterprise fund can only take ten percent of its revenue as grant funding, correct?
Tabor.
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 Okay, it's tabor. So general fund's already giving fifty percent, or ten percent. There, we do have Talitha looking for grants, but grants will always require a match. I don't know if it go, if this goes south, I don't know what to do. I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's just a tough situation because, you know, people, on an important decision, you, you want to have control of that. Well, we don't have control of that. So, I mean, we're going to have to do a really good job of the education and marketing piece, is my opinion.
Exactly.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, if I may on that, that's kind of, I, I think, what we need to express to voters is if we're, if we don't get this question passed, we will be looking at significant increases in the fees, way more than it would be otherwise. And so it's meaningful to them, and a big part of this, from my standpoint, is to keep those fees as reasonable as possible. But just for example, I was, when we were benchmarking, I think, Denver, it's over a hundred dollars just for a carload.
It is.
Wow.
And, and I, I just don't want to see Trinidad get to that level because our residents here can't afford that.
Right.
No, we're at a point where we're waiting for the Chronicle news to get back. So they can put that in there.
Are our fees comparable to cities our size like Lahana, Lamar?
Last update we did was in two thousand nineteen, and we've recently benchmarked some of the fees, and they are, they're comparable, they're comparable in the region. Naturally, they're low, but regionally, I, I think they are pretty comparable.
Yeah, and I think, going back to the question about the tipping fees, you know, when we started this conversation some time back, we talked about having to increase the tipping fees. And of course, want to make sure that we're comfortable, but not out of sorts with other areas that are equal our size. Something that's important, so.
I just, I mean, it's a matter of observation as well. If we end up in a situation where we're doing transfer, we're dependent on the destination dump fees plus transportation, so you're, you're going to be above the local average, period, because transportation's included.
Transportation can, you know, immediately jump, because they start looking immediately at gas or diesel prices, you know, that type of thing. And they're going to increase their costs immediately, and they're, and they're not going to come back down, so. Anything else, Cheryl? Thanks, Cheryl. Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item A C, first reading of an ordinance, admitting a proposed home rule charter amendment to the registered electors of the city at the regular municipal election to be held on November seventh, twenty twenty-three regarding the requirement for publication of ordinances and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to day two P M on September the first, twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, two P M time?
That was going to be part of what I was going to tell you this evening. So because the Chronicle news has changed their deadline for legals, to get our ordinances approved so that we can submit our ballot content to the county clerk, we're going to need to hold a special meeting on September first at two o'clock. And we can expect that all of our ordinances are going to end up being delayed. No longer will it be one meeting to the next. It'll probably be a skipped meeting in between, so everything's going to take longer now.
And we absolutely have to publish it in the newspaper? Can we publish it in another newspaper? That's, well.
They have to say again.
That's all there's, isn't there another way for publishing?
What about posting it in that building? Can we do a posting like at City Hall, nothing?
Publication.
That's a big publication.
Yeah, have to, you have to reach a broader audience and just wear like a meeting with the poster or whatever. You have to have a broader audience.
Well, you got Casey R. T., it's big broad.
That's the first I read those articles.
Yeah.
Want to sit there and read them all day?
Now, I'd like to, before we take the motion, we already started. Anything else you have to add to it?
Did someone introduce the ordinance?
Not yet, we need someone to introduce.
Ogletree.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and take the motion then. Someone, second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, continue.
So mine is really easy in comparison to Cheryl's item. We need to ask the voters to change the charter to remove a requirement that we publish ordinances in ten-point type because they don't print in ten-point type.
Oh, that's funny.
Yes. It's that simple. We learned, we learned that recently. I don't know how long it's been that they haven't published in ten-point, but they don't. Despite me sending my notices over to say ten-point type, it needed to be published. I just learned recently that it wasn't, so.
So what are they publishing in now? What's their type?
I don't know if it's eight or seven.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's their standard type size.
Okay. So let me be the devil's advocate here. So what if this fails, what do we do?
Well, you guys are negative.
It's all out there.
Do you love us?
No, no, I'm kidding, I'm sorry.
I honestly don't know what we would do. I don't know if we would have to run them as display ads to make sure that we accomplish ten-point type. But the cost associated, that would be huge.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Mine is still much easier. Surely you don't have any other questions?
Any other, council, have any other questions? No? Okay. All right. Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item D, first reading of an ordinance, increase in the tourism tax authorized at the November sixth, twenty-two thousand one election from three percent, three, from the three percent to six percent commencing January one, twenty twenty-four in the city of Trinidad, Colorado on transactions on furnishing rooms or accommodations, the process of which to be used for the purposes authorized by chapter seven, section seven dash forty-six of the Trinidad municipal code, or as may be amended as an increased tax pursuant to section twenty of article ten of the Colorado Constitution. Setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to two P M again on September the first, twenty twenty-three. Someone introduce?
I will.
So, need a motion?
Someone.
Need a second?
Second.
Ms. Garrett?
Mr. Rivera on this one.
I'm going to reiterate.
I just heard you for a leak. Mayor and Council, this is the adoption of the ordinance that ties in with the next question to ask the voters if they'd like to increase our lodging tax from three percent to six percent. And I'll talk about both of these at the same time, if you all don't mind, because they are related. But the proposal in front of you is to ask the voters to approve a lodging tax increase which ties in with the newly structured lodging tax ordinance that you all approved in May. And so, as you remember, the funding is now broken up into different buckets, as we're calling them, with thirty-five percent of it still going towards marketing and advertising the city, but now thirty percent of it going towards quality of life, namely outdoor recreation parks, open spaces, that type of thing. And then ten percent of it for arts and, and local festivals. And then another five percent of it goes into miscellaneous bucket. I do want to point out that we specifically put twenty percent into the budget to pay for staffing related to all of these efforts. So I, just some feedback that we've recently gotten. We've partnered with the Trust for Public Lands, and they're very supportive of this ballot question. And they're going to help us get the word out and explain to the voters the benefits of this ballot question when we get to item E. But I do want to point out, they actually told me that they love this model, and they're curious. All eyes are on Trinidad. all eyes are on Trinidad, as to what happens, because they want to promote it as a model in other communities. So, I think we can really all pat ourselves on the back for the good work we're doing on this, and be very optimistic that we'll get a positive affirmation from the voters in November, be able to have some great discussions on how we can make life better for our residents and visitors.
Questions?
So, I have a question. So, can we use some of the tourism funds now to market?
There's something illegal there, right? I'm sorry, you're down.
No, I just thought I, you know, what the heck?
Sure, yeah, good question, though.
But if anything needs to have some, a really good marketing plan, this thing is got to, because, I mean, I remember when it first passed, I think there were three or four tries before it passed.
And thank you for mentioning that. Anisa is working very heavily on some promotional information we can put out that explains the ballot question. As you all know, the city can't advocate for or against the question. That's not something we can do, but we can certainly put out information that explains the question and talks about the benefits that would come from approving it. But that's where I think the Trust for Public Lands is going to be very helpful for us, because they're not bound by that restriction, and they are very interested in coming and helping us really advocate for approving this ballot measure. And the last thing I'll say, which I think bears repeating as many times as we possibly can, is this is not a direct tax on our residents. And I think it's very important that our voters understand that. This is an increase to lodging tax for our out-of-town guests. But I want to make the point, 3% is low. We are the lowest I could find, certainly in the region, and definitely, you know, outside of that as well. I've heard of several other communities in Colorado who are eyeing increase in their lodging taxes this year as well. So, we're, we're not alone, and even at the 6%, we won't be as high as many communities in Colorado.
I researched that.
Yeah.
And Denver is almost 10.5%.
They're 10.5%, exactly, yeah.
Final problem, I think, I heard a couple of days ago that they're talking about increasing.
Yeah.
Believe this problem. Thank you, have questions?
No, just, you know, a while back, we had a question on if we're getting the full amount of lodging tax from the hotels. Have we got that corrected?
Uh, we believe we are, but the new ordinance that you all adopted, and thank you for that, adds so many checks and balances that we didn't have in the previous ordinance. It gives our finance director audit authority and investigative, investigative authority as to making sure that people are reporting their lodging tax correctly. And we administer the collection of that here internally, unlike sales tax. So, I think we're, we're doing a fantastic job at it. The one thing I will say, though, Councilmember Shu, one of my concerns is people who are staying in guest houses here and paying, but that's going unreported. So, that's something we're mindful of. We have the major providers, Airbnb is the best example of that. But there may be other things where, I don't know if Craigslist is still a thing, but that type of thing, where people are soliciting houses for rent and kind of avoiding having to pay those fees. It's something that, that we want to be aware of, if you all hear of anything about that. They're probably operating without a business license as well, so there's, there's a lot of things that need to happen. But for the most part, the ones who are on the up and up and legit, I feel very confident that we're collecting from them at this point.
That's a large chunk of change, but then, when you think about other municipalities, Denver and other northern cities, it's not that bad. I think we just need to market it right and give it to the people in the right way, and then they, they will be down to have it.
And I appreciate you saying that, Councilmember Thurman. I think one of the other points is, for our out-of-town guests who are paying this, this tax, it should come back to them tenfold, I think, in the community amenities that they'll be able to enjoy when they're here locally visiting our town.
I have no comment.
Promoting this, like you said, you know, we as a unit at this body, on a Tuesday night or a work session, we can't promote it. But when we're out on the street, we can, but great.
I will yield that question to our chief election official.
Can you do that?
Let me look at it and let you know. I'll send you an email and response, just.
And the reason why, the reason why I was mentioning it is that if we could, this is kind of yes and no. You know, the farmer's market is an ideal place to be able to, one of the things that I was thinking of doing, and it's totally off the subject, I'll mention that later on, but it would maybe fall into the same category, even with doing this. But I'll, I'll mention the other item during my, at the end of the meeting. But anyway, if we could find that out, I understood that we could individually talk to people about it, but let's find out for sure. So, I think it's really important that we do, selling point on all of these, it's going to be super important that we market these correctly and sufficiently, so that people, the residents of this community, really understand that it costs them nothing. Give you a prior, I've mentioned this once before, twice before, we started talking about this. A while back, I was at a hotel in Denver, and a single night stay was $18 just for the tax. So, you talk about 36 bucks for a two-night stay, and on and on, if you're gonna be three and four nights there. So, and, and maybe that was just in the area, it could be higher in some of the other areas of Denver. So, I, I think we just need to do a good marketing process to let the people know what they're going to benefit in the, in the long, in the long run.
It also might be helpful to educate people the same way that we do about how marijuana taxes are spent, to have a quarterly report that says what is required.
That's a great idea.
Yes.
Good thought. Any other thoughts? Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item E, First reading of an ordinance submitted to the voters of the city of Trinidad at the general election to be held on November 7, 2023. Referendum to increase the 3% lodging tax originally authorized by the registered electors on November 6, 2001, to 6%, proceeds of which to be used for the purposes authorized by Chapter 7, Section 7-46 of the Trinidad Municipal Code, or as may be amended, as a tax increase pursuant to Section 20 of Article 10 of the Colorado Constitution. Setting a hearing date for consideration of ordinance to 8:00 PM on September 1, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
I take a motion?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Ruber, anything else to add?
Nope, any questions you have on this, we have the answer.
Any, any questions on this? Any other questions?
No.
Uh, something that I saw in there, there was a dollar amount, anticipated dollar amount that was in there. Reason why that, that was put in there, that doesn't tie us into anything with that dollar amount that was said in the, in the language?
Mr. Mayor, that's a tabor requirement, and so, we have to put the anticipated dollar amounts that we'll collect, just so we're transparent with our voters.
Because that was anticipated at about $550,000.
Yeah.
Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F, Appointment and alternate appointment to the CML's 2023-2024 Policy Committee. I take a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Ruber?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so, CML has their policy committee, and you all delegate a representative. That term is now up, so we're asking, uh, this is something the mayor brought to my attention. We're asking you all to reappoint a member to this.
Uh, just for your information, it's up to you, whatever you want to do. You know, I can stay on until the end of the year, until my tenure is up, and then you could reappoint in December or something. Whatever you want to do, it's up to you. Or if you want to reappoint somebody else, that's fine, so. Just thought I'd throw that out to you guys, and I think the alternate right now, I think is.
I was thinking it would be better to wait till the end of the year, so you know that the composition of the council that's coming on.
For the reappointment?
Yeah.
Do you just think it as it is right now?
I'd, I'd make a motion that we remain status quo until the end of the year.
Okay.
And I think, do we do a motion already? Okay, so we already had a motion to approve the item, but without the names of whoever we're gonna appoint, so I would ask that the motion be amended.
So, whether, give me a motion to make it at status quo, and leave me as till the end of the year?
Yep. Yeah, that's fine. Let's go with it. Yeah.
So, motion has been amended. Call a vote on the amendment?
Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Griego, yes.
Ogletree?
Call your own.
Yes. Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. So, call a vote then on the initial motion and second?
That was not the amended motion.
That was just on the call for the, for the initial, for the initial motion, you have to call, you have to call, wait, call for a vote.
Just call for a vote again?
Yes.
Uh, Devono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item N, Council reports.
I have nothing to report this week.
Okay, here.
I, I do have something. NOAA's ARC, I know this isn't an official board commission for the city of Trinidad, but I think the shelter plays an integral part in the welfare of four-legged and two-legged citizens, so. The NOAA's ARC Board of Directors asked to present to county commissioners today, because they are concerned they do not have an animal control program for the county. We all know dogs and cats do not carry driver's licenses or passports. So, it's a really gray area where these animals are coming from. So, I, I made a presentation, because I, I kind of have an idea. I, I have a long history with NOAA's ARC. But anyway, I explained to them that their donation of several thousand dollars a year isn't equal to the 600,000 that the city, that NOAA's ARC needs every year to operate. So, after we gave them that information, I requested that they reach out to you, Mr. Ruber.
Okay.
And we start talking, both of us together, or all three of us, maybe, because they're concerned that they're, they're lacking that service to, to the county. So, we made no commitments as a board, so we're holding that. We're gonna continue. I think there's something that can be done.
Sure.
Maybe. Okay. And then, in that, in that same vein, Mayor Rico and this Mr. Ruber, who is the Trinidad City Manager, is gonna, they're gonna get locked up in dog kennels on September 9.
You guys are lucky dogs.
I will be there with a camera.
Trinidad top dogs to be arrested, so it's a fundraiser, so what, what the premise of it is, these gentlemen and a couple of other dignitaries, and not some dignitaries, are going to volunteer to go into dog kennels. They'll be cleaned, they're not, you know, you're not going in with a dog. They're gonna be fed like a dog.
Treated like a dog.
Free water, yeah, with a dog. It's gonna be pizza, but, you know, you can't use your hands. But anyway, it's a fundraiser for NOAA's ARC. And so, we have the LA County Sheriff's deputies are going to participate. Trinidad Detective Lay is going to be participating, Trinidad Fire Department, Terrell Cometto, who you know is the biggest animal lover on the planet, Mr. Ruber, Mayor Rico, and Bonnie Aaron from the Superintendent's Chris. So, I'm asking Tom and Benjamin, this is a conflict with your interview, so I don't know if something can be done. Okay, that's all.
I have nothing, I, meeting coming up, so.
I have no report.
No reports. I have no report.
Quiet.
Yeah.
I attended the Los Angeles Conde, that was at the recreational grant that we participated in with the County Trust for Public Lands, Nature Conservancy, and the DOWA. And they kind of gave their final findings of the overall recreational possibilities. There was a lot of talk initially about connectivity between Trinidad and the DOWA and the state parks, Trinidad Lake, Fishers Peak. There was a lot of talk about that connectivity and how that would work out, and they think that's very important. The other thing that they talked about was agrifarming, I believe, agrif, I think it is, agrif, is what it is. That they, they find maybe a rancher, a large rancher, where they can have like, they do ranch or whatever, that, you know, there's other parts of the country that do that. So, they're, they're talking about, they're talking about that. So, I'm not sure how that would work. That was something that was just brought up, whether or not there'll be a good participant from the, from the county, any of the ranchers out there, who knows? But that was brought up, so. That, it was, it was, it was interesting for that. Some disappointments, to some, to some degree, there was a lot of concentration on the outline areas, and not so much concentration on the city of Trinidad. That was the only thing that I found, so. Did you get a copy of that?
I haven't, yes, no.
Could you request that from the county, because they do have that? I asked them that night if they had sent it out, they said they were going to send it out. The other thing I was mentioning, when we were talking earlier about the, being able to promote the 3% sales tax outside of, you know, when we're out on our own, one of the things that I was thinking that might be good, farmer's market is here till, what are they, I don't know.
It's October, I think it is, yeah.
One of the things that I was talking about is when the, the Jeff from the Greenway Foundation, and, you know, he did a presentation, and all the information, and all the possibilities, you know, was online. And I've requested some actual, maybe two, three by four, or two by three, you know, sheets. And I thought that it would be a good idea to maybe take those to the farmer's market, put them up, and explain it to the people, what the possibilities could be. And then, then I was thinking, that's why I brought up the 3%, you know, if we could also talk about the 3% sales tax at the time, it would be an ideal time for people to ask the question, so I think it'd be nice to know if that's a possibility or not. But I think it would be good if we could get maybe, whether it's, whether it's a few from outdoor recreation, maybe a couple of us from council to do that, once we get these cards, and we can put it out at the farmer's market, and at least, and then begin the conversation to the public, and it'd be an ideal time. And I, I talked to Ms. Garrett the other day about the dedication for Jim Fernandez. And you mentioned that was going to be when?
Is it the 8? Whenever that Friday is.
September, September 9?
Eight, is that Friday?
September 8.
Eight.
Eight, whatever it is on that price.
September 8.
What is that, what is that?
That's the 9.
This is the 9, this is the, Jim's dedication is the 8.
Okay. So, anyway, you know, I invite, you know, all the council to go to the North Lake. I guess you'll send out a message as to what time and all that good stuff, correct?
Yes, invitations will be going out.
And put it in the newspaper, let, invite the public as a whole, so. I have a couple of other questions, but then, we have to meet, and I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
That is all I have. Mr. Ruber, what do you have?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I would encourage you all, if you haven't had a chance yet, to walk by First Street and see the outstanding progress that's being made. It's looking really good, and I'm so happy. We're, we're able to do a lot of little ancillary things because the bid came in so low. So, it's a much more robust project than we even had anticipated, so something really good to look forward to there. I wanted to let the council know, Mr. Just has finished his preliminary design for Central Park. Thank you for allocating some money for some upgrades over there. And so, we're sending that out to the college, to the high school, and to the Triggers, so that they can have a chance to review and give us some feedback on those designs, and have the community involved in that. But we're hoping to get that bid out, hopefully, in the next few weeks, take the fall, and update it, and come back in 2044 with an amazing new park.
I think there was solicitation already for the bid.
It may have already been solicited, yeah, so, okay. Then, Then, last thing I wanted to mention is there is a new housing application that provides for infrastructure surrounding affordable housing developments that DOLA is issuing. We're partnering with the Chino Group to look at Holy Trinity and revive that project, so it's not dead in the water by any stretch of the imagination, and the city's being very supportive of that project. We recognize the benefit to our, our community, and so I believe they're going to apply for about four million dollars in funding to get them back on track. So Mr. Uerman and I had a meeting with them this afternoon. There's a letter of interest due this Friday. The city will actually have to apply for the grant. We're eligible for it, but will essentially serve as the fiscal agent for the project.
Will there be a match of any kind?
There's a twenty percent match required. Now, part of that comes from the two hundred thousand dollars that you all have already authorized through our Housing Now program, which is terrific. The rest of it, we did ask today, can private investment serve as part of the match, and they said absolutely yes. So we will have that investment from, from the group doing the development, and so we feel very confident. But as far as the city's actual tangible dollar amounts go, we don't anticipate paying anything more than the two hundred thousand dollars you guys have already authorized.
I think they've narrowed that gap that they initially were short, so I think that this, if it goes through, and it sounded like actually DOLA actually was the one that said we ought to apply for it.
They did, they did.
So that narrows that down considerably, it looks like.
Exactly.
That's it.
Mr. Downs, what do you have?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I want to say that if anyone has questions about the reasons supporting the council action on item five B of the consent agenda, please submit a court request. I also want to say that if a majority of you would like me to respond, I will, and you can just reach out to me individually if that is something that a majority of you want me to do, okay? I didn't want to be, prepare a response for tonight so that, you know, since we generally have the policy about responding right away to petitions and communications in the same week, but if that is the will of the majority of you, please just let me know individually.
The only thing I want to say is that, you know, we follow our procedures that are laid out in our charter.
Correct.
And our charter, you know, supersedes anything else, you know, in codes or whatever, so it's something that the public needs to know. You know, we don't do things just frivolously.
Right.
We have to follow procedure.
Correct. And that's all I have.[1748.86]